Was that a wave, Shaylee?
I was just turning on the microphone and getting it ready.
Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is the work session of our city council meeting Tuesday, January 19th, 2021. And for the record, all city council members are present, as are members of the staff. We welcome you here this evening. Do we have anything for public comment tonight, Shaylee, that you're aware of?
No, sir. I don't have any emails, nothing on YouTube so far, and I haven't received anybody. There's nobody in here, sorry.
Okay, no one there. Okay, Rich, are you here?
I am, Mayor, and I haven't got any texts so far.
All right, thank you. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to presentations and reports, city administration report. Mr. Kovay, do you have anything on your report for this month, or do you have any questions for Mr. Kovay?
Nothing to add for me, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Move next, presentation of our new city website. Chris Stone, our business administrator, are you here, Chris?
I am here, Mayor.
Would you like to tell us about the new city website?
Well, for the meeting, the formal council meeting, I'll just keep it brief. I'll share at the screen the new look and design of the new city website that we've done, and just very briefly go over a little bit of the highlights as far as the new features versus the old site. And that's pretty much what I'll have for you tonight.
Okay, do you have anything for this meeting, or are you good?
I think I'm good for this meeting. I'll just save it for the formal meeting, and just keep it brief and short and sweet.
All right. Any questions for Chris? Zipping right along, community services annual report, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. Last year around this time, we presented an annual report to the council about the year 2019, what was going on in our community services department, and we've done the same for the year 2020. It's in your packet. I don't know if anybody has any questions for this meeting. If not, we can just present it in council meeting.
All right. Do you have any questions for Rich? Looks like a real good report, Chris. I went through it, and it's really well done, so appreciate what you've done there.
Thanks, Mayor.
Move on next to the consent items. Consideration approved the meeting minutes from December 15th, both the city council work session and the city council work session minutes. Do we have any changes or corrections? Moving on to the action items. Action item one, consideration of resolution 2021-01. This is declaring real property at 17, excuse me, 1570 West Ritter Drive as surplus. Mr. Douglas.
Thank you, Mayor. So these are the, that's that parcel that we bought that had the home on it for the Ritter Drive project, and so is just going to ask you to declare that as surplus so in the future we could sell that. It also includes a small strip right on the other side of the driveway that's like a three foot wide by, I can't remember how many feet long, narrow strip there. And if anybody has any questions, I'll try and answer them.
I have a thought on that property. I don't know if you want to address it here at all, or if it's better to wait for the other meeting. But I would just throw it out there that we do have some questions with that property with the rezoning that went or didn't go through a couple of weeks ago. And I personally think that it would be better to hold on to this, or maybe even table this until we have an opportunity to go through the strategic planning to see, you know, what that property is going to go. So we don't jump into this, sell it to somebody, and then have, you know, issues or something with it. If we just table it, have the strategic planning, figure out where this is going to be, what the general plan is going to say, so we can have an open, you know, so when people come forward to say, hey, we want to do this with the property, being a property owner, the city will have more to say about it, and we'll have an idea of what is going to fit there, so we don't run into the things like we did, you know, a month ago, or whatever.
I think that's a good comment, Alan. That's, that's worth looking at. We talked about that today at our meeting. We have a community development meeting on Tuesday afternoons, and we did talk about that, maybe the idea of holding on to it like you're suggesting, so it can be an integral part of maybe what happens there. So I know the people talking with Mike Eggit today, the, oh, the Yates, Yates family, they're looking at coming back for another rezon request. And I think we talked, we'd make sure they knew they were aware of that property is going to be sold. So, but I agree with you. I think it's a good idea. That's my, it'd be good to hang on to until such time as we can sell it to the right people to get the end result that we're looking for. So that's a real good comment. And you could table.
Mayor, Mayor?
Go ahead, Mark.
Mayor? Yeah, I disagree. You know, that is, there's the main, the main property that was, had the house on it, there's really only one really buyer where that is viable, and that's with the Barlow family, not the Yates, the Barlos. And now the long strip, whether that goes to the owners on either side, but neither one of them are viable to do anything with other than combine it with whatever is, was out there. And, you know, I'm just going to throw a thought out there. If the Yates, that group come back, they'll probably ask for a, some sort of development agreement. And, you know, that might not be a bad idea to have the city part of that development agreement, so that, you know, it's a delicious thought to put out there and to make sure that it's developed accordingly. Or, you know, I'm surprised that isn't transitioned over to the RDA, but anyway, I think it should be dealt with. I'm not a favorite of tabling it. Because that, to table it is strictly, that's a, that's a, that's a twist of the knife in the back, because there's only one really viable buyer out there. And that's just, that's not, you know, you put it out there, you make it public, and then at the last minute you say, oh, let's table this. That's, 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 that's lull.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Mayor, this is Sean again. So I didn't, I haven't been approached by anybody trying to buy the property or anything like that. My thought, the only reason why I brought this forward is when we bought the property, the plan was to resell it, to recoup some of that money. And then being selfish, selfish, I don't want to have to maintain that property. You know, it's in a neighborhood. We, we'd like it to be maintained, and if there was an owner there, they would maintain it better than we probably would. We don't want to have people complaining about a single parcel that's maybe not maintained. There's been nobody approached or anything after the sale. That was something I brought back because the project was done, so just to clarify that.
Are you breaking up like that, Sean? Any other comments for this meeting? Move on to action item number two. This is consideration, consideration of resolution 2021-02. This is adopting the Weaver County Technical Rescue Team Agreement. Chief Shawley.
Thanks, Mayor. So the county's approved everything. What that means basically to Riverdale when this is done is that we will receive funding for stipends, training, and maintenance for the vehicle, as well as a purchase of a new vehicle. This has been a pretty good joint effort between all the six fire chiefs involved in it, and it's taken us a little while to get here, and we're here. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions for the chief?
Chief, what happens to the, to the current equipment? Do we transfer that over to the county, to the entity?
Nope. That regional purchased equipment, which is different than county funded equipment. So we'll continue to get that equipment as well from the feds. In addition to, there's about $41,000 of new equipment coming to the county. That's equipment that is not going to be purchased by the feds that we would still need. And so that's where that money's going to come from.
Are we going to keep Heavy Rescue 41 in service then, or are we going to replace it with this new thing?
So we'll replace it with a new one, and then put that one up in service. So I think we'll probably retire this. It's a 92. We may consider keeping it in a reserve status somewhere within the county, but that unit would probably be, it wouldn't be a front out unit for us anymore.
Okay. I have one more question to do with the contract. I noticed the county gets indemnified against it, all of us, but none of us get indemnified from the actions of others. Do you want to speak to that?
So that's more of the actions of others on the way we respond. Is that kind of, I guess, that's, yeah, it's putting the responsibility, no different than the regional contract that we have. It puts responsibility on the departments to properly train their people. So if Ogden City does something that is out of the standard, Weaver County doesn't want to be responsible for that, because Ogden City is a contractor, or Riverdale didn't train their people up to the standard that exists. And that's why the standard was quoted in the contract.
So my question is more if, if someone on the scene from Ogden was negligent, but, but operating that equipment, would we be responsible, or would Ogden be responsible for their negligence?
No, it'd fall back to the individual contractor.
Okay.
I had a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
So I didn't get to look over it too well, because not all of us are retired. I was at work when, and we didn't get it until about 2 o'clock today, unfortunately. But I'm really concerned about, like, any, any cost or responsibility to the city. I noticed we're kind of on the higher level with the contractors, with a couple of big groups, with the Weaver Fire District and Ogden City, where the smaller cities seem to be in the subcontractor level, and we agree to keep nine trained people, and I just, I worry that we're committing ourselves to stuff financially, and it's hard for me to tell from reading the contract quickly like I did. So I just, could you speak to that?
I've got a lot of backseats and some.
Can we get to mute your mics unless you're talking or getting some family discussion in the background?
Steven, is that call I didn't use her for? I think they're just talking. I think you can mute them, can you? I don't know how, but.
You'd have to do that. I didn't, I didn't do the meeting, so.
I requested for them to mute, but let me see.
They muted. Looks like call in user two, four's, four's muted.
So they were unmuted, so when I just clicked on it, they must have saw that I requested it. So they are, they muted themselves.
They left the meeting.
Okay, I think that's good. So Councilman Mitchell, I can, I ain't looking at the contract. I can break it down a little bit further for you. Basically, what Riverdale's going to receive is what we're currently not receiving. We're maintaining nine technicians right now, and then some. That's being paid, the initial certification is being paid for by the region. That's zero cost to us. We get reimbursed for that. The cost to us comes from maintaining those certifications of those nine people. And that's where the county is throwing in for just training through one year is $14,625 back towards Riverdale to maintain those technicians that currently we're not getting paid for. In addition to that, there's some stipend money they're throwing out there to kind of encourage, and this is more so for some of the departments that are having an issue maintaining those technician levels. And it's more of an incentive to those people, and that's about $16,200 coming to Riverdale. And we've never received really any maintenance for the truck. We've kind of just maintained that truck the best we can. There's been a couple big items that the regions kind of helped out with, but we're also going to receive now $7,000 to help maintain the unit, which we have never received any of that before. So a lot of this money coming in, a lot of what they're asking us to do, we're already doing. There's nothing new that's going to be required for us to get there. We're only going to receive funding now for what we've already been doing.
Okay, so as long as, as long as you can assure us that it's not going to set us up for, for liabilities or costs down the road, I think, I think that makes good sense. I'm glad to see us getting some money for some of that stuff.
Yeah, I, this is a big win, Chief, if they would do this agreement to provide these services and get some payback.
Well, I think we had to go through and prove, and one of the things I wanted to look at was, is this something that's even realistic, or feasible, or needed within this county? And it quickly determined that it was. We were paged out to 359 incidents in three and a half years. Roughly, we arrived on scene and functioned at a heavy rescue capacity about 150 times. And so what this also does for us is we're adding on two other heavy rescues within this county instead of us being by ourselves. And that gives us the support. It also doesn't send us on everything. So that's going to also help us in the long run in maintaining some of our costs that we have to forward in this thing. So it's, it's quite a, it's quite a service we're going to be able to provide now, and it makes my guys a lot safer, because we're also getting technicians from other cities that are certified and qualified to help us on some of these calls.
How does Weaver County Search and Rescue fit into this puzzle?
So we've been up to Eden a couple times, some up on the trailheads. Ogden City primarily works the canyon with Weaver County Search and Rescue. For us, Ogden City's basically going to take the lead on that, and we're not going to run to Eden anymore, unless it's a pretty significant incident, which that's huge for us, not running that distance. So for us, Ogden City's going to take that workload, unless it's a pretty big rope rescue, and then they're obviously going to end up calling us, because we have, the, the Riverdale unit is still going to be the primary heavy rescue unit. We carry, we carry stuff that nobody else does. And that's, that's one of the things we don't want to do, is try to split this equipment over three different units and do that. That's not what this is about, but there are still going to be those times, but Ogden's going to take the lead on some of that for us.
Any other questions?
Mayor, I just wanted to comment if I may, just really quick. This represents a lot of work on the part of Chief Shawley, not only going after these funds, but really working with other departments and with the county. And I just wanted to commend him on getting to this point where he's, he's really put this together for the residents of Riverdale, who will benefit, obviously, the most from just even from proximity with having this, this new equipment and these new funds available for us. And, and so I just wanted to congratulate Chief Shawley and tell him great job on that, and this is fantastic work. So I'm proud of the work that he's done there.
I agree with that, Mayor. I think that Chief Shawley, we're, we're pleased to have you in Riverdale. This is a big win for the citizens of Riverdale to have this equipment and this training located.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to action item number three. Consideration of resolution 2021-03 to approve Raising Cane's final site plan at approximately 4168 South Riverdale Road. This is requested by PM Design Group, Kim Lee Horn, and Raising Cane's Restaurants. Mr. Eggit.
Thank you, Mayor. As you noted, PM Design Group, Kim Lee Horn, and Raising Cane's Restaurants are represented this evening, and joining us by Morrison Muha and Chris Bick, who will represent that project. This matter is currently on property zone in a community commercial C2 zoning, and that means it requires a conditional use permit approval from the planning commission, which it was provided during the last planning commission meeting for this use. This matter did come for the planning commission during their last meeting on, it would have been the last meeting in December, is when this was heard, at that time. At the conclusion of the representation of this project to the planning commission, the planning commission made a recommendation that city council approve. This submittal subject to resolving all outstanding staff concerns, and those concerns have been addressed by the applicants, with the understanding that some items from Mr. Douglas be addressed prior to any construction activities on this project. The current, the property's currently owned by DRH Properties. It has also gone through a design review committee review process, wherein it received approval of the represented coloration and materials, proposed landscaping plan, and the signage package that you have in your packet this evening. There is no public hearing required for the site plan proposal, and this is a component development of the larger project that the DRH company is working on in conjunction with the RDA at the Riverdale Landing Phase 2 Site Plan that will discuss the next item. I'll go into more details at the main meeting, but I think that's a brief summary. If there's any other questions or comments, Mayor, I otherwise defer to you and move forward from there. Thank you.
Okay. Do you have any questions for Mr. Eggit? Move on to action item number four, consideration of ordinance 931 to approve Riverdale Landing Phase 2 Final Subdivision Platte and Site Plan at approximately 4194 South and 4182, 82 South Riverdale Road. This is requested by AWA Engineering, DRH Company. Mr. Eggit again.
Thank you, Mayor. And I should have noted probably that the Riverdale City RDA is a partner in this project as well, as far as the off-site improvements for access to this project. With that, representation this evening will be Eric Mullenberg and Dee Hanson, and potentially Spencer Connolly. Again, this is in a community commercial C2 zone, and it was subject to a conditional use permit review process with the planning commission. Planning commission has provided that conditional use permit approval for the requested use of two new restaurant buildings with drive-through accessways, and then the associated project needs for that. The subdivision and site plan requests for, on properties currently owned by DRH Properties LLC. This also went through a design review committee process, wherein the design review committee approved the proposed building coloration materials, landscape plan, and the signage package for these new building sites. Again, like was noted with the Raising Cane's project, the planning commission did review this submittal, and at the conclusion of the discussion, supported a favorable recommendation to city council to approve the submittal by DRH Company, subject to resolving outstanding staff concerns. Again, as was noted in the last one, city staff has accepted, or I guess approved, the representations in your packet this evening, again with the understanding that there's some checklist items, both offsite and onsite, for Mr. Douglas, our support director, that will need to be resolved prior to any construction on the project to move forward. Other than that, we're running out of time, so all other items have been provided in your packet, and if there are any other questions for me, I'd be glad to answer those or address those, or we can discuss further at the main meeting.
I have one question.
Okay.
So we're approving the plat, in the pack, but I couldn't see the plat. My page 130 appears to be blank. I asked Shaylee maybe see if she could provide that for us. And the exhibit A, is it there for other people?
No, mine's blank as well, Bray.
That makes it hard to review when we, you know, I, when we don't have what we need and to approve it.
All the drawings should be in there, so I'm trying to see what page they're on.
Yeah, the legal description's missing on mine as well.
Right.
The legal documents, yeah, the legal documents I did not prepare, but the packet documents, the subdivision site plan, those documents start on page 158 in your packet.
Okay.
And the actual subdivision looks like it's on page 165, or maybe... Backing up. Actually, it's on page 163 in your packet. That's the actual subdivision plat. And then the site plan itself is found conclusively on page 183 of your packet. That's, that's the best representation of the site plan without all the other utility drawings and some of those things, so.
Yeah, the site plan was good. I just couldn't find the plat. Mine was blank, so.
I apologize for that. That was probably because you were looking at the legal tool. That's at the very beginning. Yeah, I apologize. That page I gave, that page I gave you, 163, that is the plat that would be recorded.
So, Mike, are you looking for approval pending Sean's appro, or, you know, Sean's concerns being resolved?
That's what Sean is recommending, and clearly we support Sean's position with that, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mike, do we know what restaurants are scheduled to go into that area with this approval?
Yes, the lineup is, so right next to Krispy Kreme, it will be Cafe Rio. Thereafter, north of that will be Mobeta's, and thereafter that would be obviously the Raising Cane's that would be the, the previous item on your agenda.
Also, are there any plans to develop back off of Riverdale Road? Is there any plans for that property back there?
Clearly, at future date, that's the intent and the hope of the RDA's efforts, working with DRH. So beyond any, beyond that, anything conclusive at this time, we don't know of anything. I mean, Dee Hanson has joined us and will join us, I think, at the main meeting if he wants to share anything from that perspective with the city. Obviously, the RDA has been working with Mr. Hanson as well, so, but, but there's been nothing conclusively new to report at this time. I guess that's the easiest answer.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Move on to action item five. This consideration of ordinance 932 is cementing the zoning of property and the city, city's land use map to change the land use designation of land located at approximately 1450 West Riverdale Road from agricultural A1 zoning to regional commercial C3 zoning. This is requested by Eric Anderson of Maverick Incorporated. Mr. Eggit again.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, the applicant this evening is Maverick Inc., represented by Eric Anderson. Also, the Gibby, Gibby family, who are the, the property users and owners, are indirectly involved and have interest in this. The property currently is A1 zoning. Their desire would be to zone it to regional commercial C3 zoning to allow for the future possibility of a commercial retail development opportunities on this property. If you want to understand further what that is, feel free to read through the explanation of their, their application as to why they're requesting this. In this specific case, the Gibby family is requesting that the city... is requesting that the city consider approving a contingent rezone for the obligation in order to protect their land-owning interests on this property in the event that Maverick, the Maverick Project did not get completed or go through in the future on the property. City staff interviewing with city attorney. This concept has determined the best approach to accomplish this goal is for the rezone request to be considered for approval with the understanding that the rezone would be put into legal effect on the zoning map and other city resources, utilities, only after a final site plan for the Maverick Project has been approved by the City Council at a later date. On January 21st, we did, or January 12th, excuse me, we did hold a public hearing with the Planning Commission, meeting all state standards and requirements, notices for such, and no comments were provided before the meeting or during the public hearing. At the conclusion of that, the Planning Commission did provide a favorable recommendation to City Council for the requested rezone with the condition that the zoning map and other city resources not be changed until after a final site plan for the Maverick Project has been approved by the City Council. So that, that's where things sit at it. I believe that Mr. Gibby may be in the audience, or the Gibby family in the audience with Shaylee this evening as well, should there be any questions for them. And Mr. Anderson is on the call with us and will be on the call with us during the main meeting. And with that, Mayor, I'll defer back to the council and yourself if you have any questions for me. Thank you.
Mayor, I, I think we're short on time, but isn't this a little strange to ask for a rezone on a possibility of something that may or may not happen? That if they do a site plan, and they can't, can't they come and do the rezone at that time as opposed to doing it now on contingent upon a possibility of something that may or may not happen?
I-
A little strange.
I've, I've never known to do that. Normally, you do your land use with a rezone, you change the nature of the land use utility, and then that sets the stage for the site plan approval. Other cities do do this, Councilmember Arnold, they actually have processes, very specific processes, when they'll, they'll do a contingent rezone subject to a site plan approval. We just don't quite have that equipped, but there's nothing illegal about doing it this way and reviewing with our city attorney. It would work. It only limits the rezone to the Maverick's middle going through. If it doesn't, then the property would stay A1 and retain its agricultural use. So it's a, it's a, an opportunity to protect the taxable and property interests of the Gibby family, frankly, and, and other cities have done. So that's why it does feel a little different or new, because it isn't something that we've done here in Riverdale, but other cities do do this every once in a while.
Okay. I think Mr. Brooks felt it was good to go, or okay to go this way. So we've got two other items. Should we just take those to the main meeting? Those are things we can discuss there. Do you want to talk about them now? I'm okay either way. Why don't we go ahead and start our, we'll adjourn this meeting. Do we have a motion? Do we have any discretionary for this meeting? Do we have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Do you have a motion to second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This meeting's now adjourned. Okay, we'll move on next to city council meeting. Like to call this city council meeting to order Tuesday, January 19th, 2021. For the record, all city council members are present, as are members of the staff, and we have some visitors with us also. I've asked Chief Brinkman if he'd lead us in the pledge tonight.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic that stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this point, we'd like to take a moment of silence as we remember those who are serving in our military, protecting the many freedoms that we enjoy. We'd also like to remember our first responders that are, put their selves in harm's way on our behalf to protect our local interests and safety. I'd also ask you if you would, during the moment of silence, remember our city council members as they make decisions this evening that they might be in the best interest of those who live here and those who come here. Now take a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Move on next to public comment. This is an opportunity to address the city council regarding your concerns or ideas. No action will be taken during public comment. We would ask you to limit your time to three minutes. Do we have anyone? Shaylee down in the council room?
Do any of you want to do a public comment?
Like to make public comment?
So no one that is here wants to do a public comment. I did receive a comment on the YouTube. It's from Lori Fleming. It's regarding action item number one. She says, "The reason no one has approached the property is we were told it goes or will go to the Yates property." That's all she said. And then I don't have any emails or anything else.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Shaylee, could you repeat that?
Yes.
I missed it.
No, you're fine. So, "The reason no one has approached the property is we were told it goes or will go to the Yates property."
Okay. Any, any other? Rich, do you have any text messages?
I don't have any text messages, Mayor.
Nothing else for public comment? Okay, move on next to presentations and reports. Mayor's report, I'd just like to comment on one thing. And I think we all remember Christmas Day in the morning, we had a shooting in one of our trailer parks. A couple people were shot, one fatally. And I just want to say kudos to our police department. I know they were there. The chief and members of the force were there. They put in a long day. I think it was about 9:30, 10 o'clock at night. I got my last text from the chief. And I, when I heard of the shooting in the morning, when I got the first text message, that was early. I think this whole thing started about 3:30, 4 o'clock in the morning. But I just know it was a long day for them. Again, like I say, when, when I first thought, I thought, I wonder how long it'll take before they have these in custody, because it's been kind of, become, if you shoot somebody in Riverdale, you're probably in jail by nightfall. And, and that happened. There were two of the three. They had them locked up. I think the two of them even had confessed. Don't want to be quoted on that, but I believe they were. And I just know there was a long day and, for Christmas, Christmas Day to spend there in that kind of a situation. But I want to tell Chief, you and your folks, we really appreciate what you do. Thank you for that. And I know the, the other, the third individual, as soon as they found out where he was, they had him. And he's, he's behind bars also. It's been a busy time. We've had this COVID going on now for almost a year. And boy, it's, it's amazing. And not just for the police department, for everybody. It's been, been busy. It's been trying. It's, senior center's pretty well closed down except for the meals. They're, they're fixing each day, takeout meals. Community center is very limited. I know Mike Eggit, developments and things, boy, they've really, really been going. And, and we've got some busy people and through the COVID, and we see some positive things. Our sales tax, I think you probably noticed on the administration report, maybe Bill would comment on this. I know I mentioned it today, but for the last quarter, you look at even really, in the last, the new fiscal year, sales taxes up revenue. So that's positive, and, and it's a good thing. But just appreciate all our staff and employees do. They do so much in often in times that are pretty difficult. This has been difficult this year. And I just want to pass on, I know the council feels the same way. We, we certainly appreciate all you do for the, for the residents, those of us that live here, and the fine way you carry out your duties. So thank you very much. Move on next to our city administration report. Mr. Kobe, do you have anything for this one?
Just what you see in your packet there, Mayor, and, and council, I just wanted to point out a couple of things. What you said it right on, Mayor. Our, our first responders are, are doing a fantastic job, and I am so grateful for everything that they do. They keep us safe. They are the ones standing watch in the night so that we can sleep. And I do, I for one, sleep better knowing that these guys are on, on the job, and I appreciate it very much. Every one of them, every single person in, in these departments are, are going above and beyond to make sure that our residents are, are very well served and protected, and I'm, I'm grateful for that. The other thing I wanted to point out is we have in January, a number of employees that are experiencing or having anniversaries. The, the person that's at the top of the list here is Cindy Draper with 26 years of employment with the city, which is fantastic. And then Stacy Como is next with 16 years. And Stacy works, does our HR and benefits and just is amazing and does a fantastic job for us. So you see the other folks there in your report. This is, this is a wonderful situation for me to come into, because we have people that have been here that, quite a while, and people that are just having their first year anniversary this month. And it's, I'm grateful for everybody. Everybody's efforts are, are just absolutely second to none here in Riverdale. And we're a bunch of people that are dedicated to serving the residents and citizens, and people that even come and work in and shop in Riverdale. It's, this is a great place to be. And our employees are really second to none. And I'm grateful and honored to be a part of this team. So that's, that's it for me.
Thank you, Bill. Do you have any questions for Bill on the administration report? Lot of information there, a lot of things going on. Okay, move on to presentation number three. This presentation of our new city website. Chris Stone, our business administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take a brief moment this evening. Our current city, city website design has been around since 2008, and it was long overdue for a new design that will be much better. So I've been working on that for, for quite a little while. After several starts and stops of different programs to use, I finally found one that I'm comfortable with and happy with. And so I just wanted to kind of share that. First, the philosophy behind the new design. We wanted something that was a very clean design. Our current one is over the years, started, gotten a little more cluttered as we've gone along. And we wanted to streamline some of the things so we could, it could, navigation could be easy. But above all, we wanted to make it a responsive design. And what that means is no matter which device you're using to access the website, the website formats to that device. Our current website does not do that. You look at it on a cell phone, you get the same look as you do on a desktop, and it, and it isn't, doesn't lend itself well to cell phone use. So I'm going to try to share the, the screen and give you a preview of our, what's coming up. Let me get that on here. Okay. So hopefully you can see that. What you're looking at here is basically the homepage, our new design for the homepage. We have a bank of dropdown menus along the top here for our navigation. If you scroll down, we have a couple of quick links for items that are often accessed. And then we'll have our news items. Currently, we have some COVID updates on the homepage for people to keep up with where we're at on that. And as you go farther down, we have upcoming events and a calendar and a couple of quick items on the calendar. It allows you to click on an item, which brings up the information, including a link. With this calendar, you can also click on the location to bring up a Google map. And so that'll be, so then on recycle days, we, I wanted to make it at a glance to know if you're on the red recycle week or blue recycle week. And so that brings that up like that as well. Going back up to the top here. So we, we just wanted to make a real clean look, like our meetings and notices page. We've got schedules, we got links to the upcoming agendas and so forth. And then at the bottom, and almost all pages have related pages. Just another page to look at, city council page. We've got you all lined out there. And if you don't know, most of I think do, there is a bio for each of the council members on here. And if you want to look over your bio in the next coming little bit, they're all currently on the other site too, our current site. I can always update those at any time. Just shoot me an email with any updates you need on those. Now I want to show you real quickly, this is basically the center part is what it will basically look like on a smartphone. So if you can see, it repositions everything so that it, it's very easy to read and see on a smaller device. Down here on the calendar, of course, there's not room, but we still have the red dots and the blue dots for recycle days. You, you just touch on that and it brings up more information. Our main dropdown menu is up here. Of course, we can drop down to find the same navigation you do on the, on the desktop view. So anyway, I just wanted to give you all a little preview of that. As far as launching the new design, I'm looking at doing that in the first part of next week. I just need to go through and make sure all the links are good and established, that we have everything in place. There's a little bit of additional information I've got to get in there. It's probably 95, 98% done as it is. So looking at launching that early next week, and hopefully it'll be a positive thing for people to enjoy. And, and hopefully it'll be a step in the right direction. So I just want to show that to you, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Nice job, Chris. That's wonderful.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Looks good.
We appreciate all Chris does. He does so many different things for the city and newsletter, senior center, Veterans Memorial. He just videoed the, he and Rich, the video on the Veterans Day program. We appreciate you a lot, Chris, for what you do.
Thank you.
Move on next. Presentation number four, Community Services Annual Report. This presenter's Rich Taylor, Community Services Director.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to present this report to the city council tonight. 2020 was an interesting year in our department, as it was for many of you. And it saw, at the beginning of the year, we finished the remodel at the senior center with the painting and carpeting and lighting and unfortunately didn't have time to show it off as we got shut down with COVID. it off as we got shut down with COVID. And that started a whole chain of events where we had to adapt and create on the fly. One of the highlights of the year is we were able to reassign some of our employees to help out in the public works department and help them with their seasonal help. It was really good for our people to continue to stay employed and get hours and hopefully it was helpful to Sean and the public works staff. We included a lot of the different adaptations and different things that we did throughout the year. Wanted to present this report to you guys and to see if you had any questions and/or comments that I could answer for you.
It's like you must have covered it all, Rich, in your, in your report. It's really good. Great job on that. Appreciate all you do.
Good job, Rich. Thanks, Mayor.
Move on next to our consent items. We have one consent item. Consideration to approve the meeting minutes from December 15th, 2020. This is the city council work session and city council regular session, the minutes for both meetings. Do we have any changes or corrections to the minutes? Do we have a motion then to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the consent item.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion, Councilor Arnold and a second. Councilor Ellis, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous in favor. Thank you. Move on next to our action items. Action item one, this consideration of resolution 2021-01. This is declaring real property at 1750 West Ritter Drive as surplus. Mr. Douglas, public works director.
Thank you, Mayor. As we discussed, this property was purchased for the widening of Ritter Drive. The sole purpose of it was just to be able to widen that right of way. We took the house down, put the right of way in. At this time, we don't feel like the city has any need or use for this property. So my thought was, was to take it off of our maintenance schedule. We wouldn't have to maintain it being in the neighborhood. But if the city council doesn't feel like this is the right time, whatever they want to do. When we purchased it, we talked about reselling it once the project was done. But I'm open for whatever the council and the mayor would like to do.
Questions, I'll take them.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Just to do on the record, I think with what happened with the Yates proposal about a month ago and what we're doing in that area is unclear with the planning commission not approving or saying no to the rezone at that point. We had talked about putting it on the agenda at the first strategic planning meeting to possibly look at it. And I think we should table this until that point till we can talk to it. And it's, I don't know when our first strategic planning meeting is. Is it February? Or we have to wait till it's February? See, Bill nodding. So if we could put it on the agenda for February, we could get it taken care of pretty quick and then Sean's concerns about taking care of the property. I also think it's very inappropriate that we're mentioning any possible buyers of how we think it's going to go. I mean, we, when the city surpluses property, we should not be saying it's going to the Barlow's, to the Yates property, to, or you know, which Lori Fleming wrote in and all that kind of stuff. That's, that's very inappropriate to see if we're leaning one way or the other. So I would make a motion to table this until that point and have it, put it on the agenda for the first strategic planning meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Who is the second? Was that Hilton?
You always ask me, Mayor.
Well, that's because I can't see. You're not on my screen. Okay. We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, back to the axiom of mean what you say and say what you mean. This comes across as kind of, I don't know, petty. If you, if you put it on there, is this not vetted? Do we, I mean, is this, I'm not sure what is, what is trying to be accomplished awaiting to the strategic planning. But if you say you're going to do something, you know, have the integrity to do it or don't put it on the agenda. That's all.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Any other comments? Okay, seeing that, Stevens, would you poll the council, please, on the motion?
Councilmember Ellis?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Councilmember Arnold?
Aye.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Nay.
It's four in favor, one opposed. The motion carries to table the item, okay? Okay, move on to action item two, consideration of resolution 2021-02. This is adopting the Weaver County Technical Rescue Team Agreement. Chief Sholl.
Thanks, Mayor Council. We're here today because we've been able to work together as Weaver County Fire Chiefs, get to this agreement with Weaver County. Weaver County is a very unique county as it comes to having two major rivers, highways, airports, rail yards, high-rise buildings and so forth. And that in turn requires that we have specialized units, specialized trained people. And that's where this heavy rescue program comes into play. And I see, pretty excited. I see great benefits, like we've already seen to Riverdale, having the unit here, as well as adding a couple additional units. In addition to the funding the county is going to help us out with to offset the funding that we're not receiving from regional, we're going to continue with regional funding as it comes to providing new certifications and training for our people, as well as some overtime costs that comes to. And then also the equipment that we currently have will continue to be upgraded by the region on the equipment that they have already purchased. So there's a lot of definite pros with this. So I see this as a really good service moving forward to Riverdale citizens, but not only that, all of Weaver County that both drives through here is, and lives here. So with that, I'll fill it. Any questions?
Mayor?
Go ahead, Mr. Arnold.
Chief Sholl, I just, I think I speak for the council in saying this, but for those of us, or those of us that haven't been a party to the multiple chief of the fire department, your predecessor, I wanted to thank you for the professionalism and personality that you bring. It, it's, it's a joy to work with you and I hope that we can support you as much as you support us. It really is a joy to work with you and I've only got one other fire chief to compare you to. So the bar is not really high, but you're clear, man.
Thanks.
Mayor, I agree with Councilman Arnold's and I'll move to approve this as outlined in the packet.
Second?
Okay, I have a motion, Mr. Hilton, the second, by Mr. Arnold. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Nay, would you poll the council on the resolution? Can I check? What is resolution?
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Councilmember Arnold?
Aye.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Ellis?
Aye.
Unanimous in favor. Thank you. That was, that is a great thing, Chief. We really appreciate what you've done there. We know the work that's gone into that. And I know what you did at WACOG, talking with all the mayors and then going out to all the other fire chiefs in the district and having meetings. And it was quite a lengthy process. And you've asked me a couple of times, but yeah, that's never come up again in a WACOG meeting. So I'm glad you, everything went the way you tried to do it. And that's a benefit for all of us in Weaver County, particularly here in Riverdale. It's, it's going to save us money. It's going to help our people and it's, it's just a good thing. So thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Okay, move on to action item number three, consideration of resolution 2021-03. This is to approve Raising Cane's final site plan at approximately 4168 South Riverdale Road. This is requested by PM Design Group, Kim Lee Horn and Raising Cane's Restaurant. Mr. Eggen?
Thank you, Mayor. As you noted, PM Design Group, Kim Lee Horn, Raising Cane's Restaurants are all represented by Marissa Muhha and Chris Pict this evening. This request is for a new restaurant building with drive-in access and supporting facilities, needs services for this real estate at 4168 South Riverdale Road. This property, if you're kind of familiar, will be the property directly south of the old Farmers Insurance Building there on Riverdale Road. The property is owned commercial, community commercial C2 zoning and required a conditional use permit, which has been approved by the planning commission at a previous planning commission meeting. Site plan is developed on property near to a cafe or restaurant, a vacant building, apartment complex use, and across the street from a major commercial center, being the Lowe's Commercial Center. The property is currently owned by DRH Properties LLC. There was a design review committee review of the submittal for the coloration and materials design of the building, the landscaping plan and the sign plan that has been approved by the design review committee as per city code requirement. There's no public hearing required for this process. And wherein this is a, a use subject to a larger site plan slash subdivision development with the DRH properties, there's no requirement for them to do an engineer's cost estimate document, as all the engineer's cost estimate and escrow requirements are tied into that Riverdale Landing Project. That's just a note, I wasn't able to discuss at our work session, but that is relevant in this case. To that, the general plan used for this area says plan commercial high proposed project use would, would easily comply with that land use at this location. And then you'll see the legal documentation, my review comments thereafter. Just scrolling through the packet, you'll see the staff comments. Mr. Douglas has noted in his review, this is my review for Raising Cane's. Thanks, I would be fine with this. And he was referencing Riverdale Landing Phase Two project and Raising Cane's moving forward. If all of the items were resolved before a building permit is issued, thanks. And then he notes five items under stormwater that just need to be complied. Typical things we see drainage system operation maintenance plan and BMPs recorded with plat, stormwater prevention plan for construction site, including BMPs with restroom, notice of intent filed with state, stormwater injection well permit and plan detail for orifice plate. And then he has three follow-up comments for water. Water line sizes need to match, provide water usage peak demands. This needs to include outside landscape watering and then provide what water shares will be used to meet water requirements. With that water shares comment, I believe the DRH group is working through that with Mr. Douglas at this time. There are no other comments to be noted from the police department or fire department based upon what has been included in your packet. Following that, you'll see the city engineers report wherein he says, "The review comments of my last review date, the 5th of November 2020, have all been resolved. In my opinion, the drawings and calculations now reflect the standards of Riverdale City. I herewith recommend approval of site plan drawing, stormwater calculations, geotechnical report is submitted." So our city engineer supporting fund that, you'll see the minutes from the planning commission meeting on December 22nd, wherein this was held. And then the application documents, showing payment, the conditional use permit, showing approval. And then some follow-up comments from the team showing that they've cleared all outstanding concerns from their end representing Raising Cane's. Following that, you'll see some coloration designs of what the building will look like and the signage. And then after that, you'll see the actual site plan documentation that has been submitted. And with that, Mayor, I defer back to the city council. If you have any other questions for me or the applicants who are on the call with us this evening. Thank you.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I just appreciate the staff's work in this. They're spot on. And so I would make a motion to approve resolution 2021-03 with the stipulation that all staff concerns must be met before a building permit is issued.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Arnold. Do we have a second?
Second? Second? That's great.
Makes me feel better.
I can even see it now.
Motion. Bring multitasking.
Yeah, these are plans. Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion on the motion on this resolution? Mr. Ellis?
You're muted, Brent. When do they think they're going to start the building? Once they get, once this is approved? Is there a timetable? It's when they're going to start or when they're going to finish?
From Raising Cane's perspective, they're as anxious as possible. Clearly, the RDA and DRH company will need to get the improvements and utilities in a place where they can actually then develop the site. So it will be really dependent upon DRH company and the RDA doing what needs to happen should, again, the city council approve their project at the next item. That timeline will be dependent on those efforts of the RDA and DRH company.
So this will be the first of the three restaurants are going to be put in on that section of Riverdale Road?
I'm not sure what the timing will be of DRH's projects, but again, Raising Cane's is very anxious. If they could get going tomorrow, they would.
Okay, great.
Okay, any other discussion? Ms. Nay, would you poll the council, please, on the ordinance?
Councilmember Ellis?
Excuse me, excuse me. It's, this is a resolution. I'm sorry.
Councilmember?
On the resolution?
Yes. Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Arnold?
Aye.
Unanimous in favor. Thank you. Those of you who are here representing Raising Cane's, Dee Hanson, we're really excited about this. Words gone out on this on our city newsletter to all residents, our city Facebook site. And we get feedback from those that have eaten Raising Cane's in other states that are pretty excited about having Raising Cane's come. We're excited and we look forward to having you here. So thank you very much for having an interest to come to Riverdale.
Well, we thank you all so very much for this opportunity. We are excited to be a part of the city.
Thank you. Look forward to the grand opening. All right, move on to action item number four, consideration of ordinance, 931 to approve the Riverdale Landing Phase Two final subdivision plat and site plan at approximately 4194 South and 4182 South Riverdale Road. This is requested by AWA Engineering and the DRH company. Mr. Eggen?
Thank you, Mayor. As you noted, DRH company is the petitioner on this in conjunction with efforts from the RDA, Riverdale City RDA where applicable. Representing their interest tonight is Eric Mulberg and Dee Hanson has joined us this evening as well. And we look to them for any questions or comments you may have for them. The request is for two new restaurant buildings with drive-through services and supporting, I guess, say utilities and private access drive aisles and other needs. and proposed signage and approved those, those representations. Public hearing is not required to be heard for this subdivision site plan proposal. You'll see in your packet a brief note under the Title and Ordinance Guidelines that there is an engineer's cost estimate document requirement that has been provided for this project, and our city engineer has reviewed the engineer's cost estimate document and has recommended it for approval as meeting the city requirements for the performance security product with the project developer. The general plan, again, for this area is also planned commercial high and this proposed use does comply with this land use. One item to note that I wasn't able to, to address in the work session, there is a vacation plat component to this plat that would remove the current alignment of 500 West Street and realign it as new 500 West Street, but that is part of the plat recordation that would be part of the subdivision. So, please take note of that. And then we are affirming more clearly the right-of-way for where 550 West meets 500 West as it loops up around Ruby River. That is a, a actual more dedicated establishment of that road right-of-way as part of the subdivision plat, so please be aware of that. Following the summary, you'll note my comments. The only thing I want to direct the engineering team, AWA, to do from my perspective is on the sheet that shows the inlet, the gutter inlet boxes, just notify that bicycle safe grates will be installed there. It's a very minor thing, but just one thing that you can make sure of, the final detailed drawings shows that. Following that, reviewing the departmental staff reports from our city public works director, Sean Douglas. On the 13th of this month, he says, same as, as the Raising Cane's comments, "These are my review comments for the Riverdale Landing off-site. I would be fine with this and Raising Cane's moving forward if all the items were resolved before building permit is issued, thanks." And just to clarify for the city council, the Riverdale Landing off-site is gonna be the RDA project areas that the DRH and the RDA are working on to access and create utility connections for then the site plan. On the 14th, Mr. Douglas notes, "I'm fine approving the site plan review as long as they, these items are done before the permit is issued, thanks." So, again, referencing the building permits specifically for the site plans themselves. You'll note in the packet, the same comments under stormwater that were referenced in Raising Cane's relative to recordation of drainage system operation and maintenance plan, the notice of intent filed with state, the note certify the retention chambers, orifice hole size and elevations, stormwater injection well permit. And then he does note, "The inlet box on the downstream side of the orifice plate needs to be junction box instead of inlet box." I do know the engineering team, AWA, has addressed these comments already and evidenced that in an email to us, but I don't know if Mr. Douglas has been able to verify those changes, so. Underwater, it says, "Provide water usage peak demand, including irrigation, provide what water shares will be used to meet water requirements." Under other, note requiring "All construction and materials shall meet Riverdale City standards." Note requiring "All missing non-functioning and/or damaged surface improvement shall be replaced," and the third item is cross-access agreement for utilities. Then on the off-site, which will be more of the Riverdale RDA project area, there's a few items. Again, the drainage system operation and maintenance plan to be recorded, BMPs to treat stormwater before water enters underground retention detention, stormwater prevention plan for construction site including BMPs for the project, notice of intent filed with state before building permit is issued, note to certify retention detention structure size after construction. Again, the injection well permit, orifice elevations need to be verified to ensure they retain for a .5 storm event. And underwater, it says fire line connection involved for Raising Cane's, and then the water line size for connection service need to be the same for Raising Cane's. And then finally, under sewer, he just has a question that, that I think can be resolved between him and AWA Engineering, just says, "Does the sewer line on Brands Way need to be continued for further development?" Following his comments, there are no comments noted of concern from the police department nor the fire department. And then Mr. Nelson's engineering review comments, he says that, "I have completed my review of the above referenced subdivision plats, vacation and dedication plat, and the noted off-site and onsite improvement plans and find submitted drawings and calculations in compliance with the public work standards of Riverdale City. I have also reviewed the submitted engineer's cost estimate prepared by the design engineer, AWA, for the public, required public improvements. I agree with the engineer's cost estimate for the quantities and costs associated with the installation of the required public improvements." So, he is certified and, and approved or recommended, I guess, for approval, the documents that are submitted from his perspective, and then you'll see the minutes thereafter, the application documents and conditional use permitting documents that have been submitted, the engineer's cost estimate thereafter, some signage information, and then the actual drawings themselves follow. And near the end, after the, the, all of the submitted drawings have been provided, there's also some renderings of what the buildings will look like and the landscaping plan and other items as such. So, with that, I know it's a lot of information, but we've gone through this for quite a extended period of time reviewing everything, and I would defer to a city council, Mayor, for any questions or comments you may have for me or the development team. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, Mayor. Sorry. So, is this ready to come to us? I mean, or, why, why are you reading the packet to us? Is, is there a lot outstanding here that, that we're not? I'm just, just curious why, I mean?
No, there's not a lot. I just want to be thorough to show, show where all the sides of the representation where the project is.
Okay.
It's just to be thorough, just so you're fully aware.
I'm just saying, that's, that's the packet, so, but, yeah. So, anyway, I would move to approve Ordinance 931 as stated within the packet and with all of the, making sure that all city staff has bought off on any concerns that they might have before they issue any permits.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Arnold made the motion, Mr. Hilton made the second. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Ellis?
Just a question for, for Dee Hanson, and I appreciate the great job you've done in developing the property along Riverdale Road. I just wondered if there's any long-term plans for the property that's back on the hillside? I know that's hard to develop, but is there any interest or any concept that you have for the development of that property?
Thanks for letting me be on here. First of all, it's, it's been a long time getting here, so it's, it's a good day. As far as the back property, we have been working with the, the joint venture we have with Larry Miller Group and working on different concepts, everything from hotels to, you know, reaching out to some retail, as you know, that's been kind of slow. We've have a couple office concepts we've laid out. So, we don't have any concrete plans right now. Our big choice is to get the front built, and we anticipate starting construction in the next weeks. We, we're out to bid and finalizing contracts. So, I believe once that gets finalized and developed and, you know, as we come out of, you know, kind of the climate we're in for development, that it'll help that back property, you know, have the proper interest, we get moving on that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Dee. Any other discussion? Okay, Ms. May, would you pull the council on Ordinance 931, please?
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellis?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
And Councilmember Arnold?
Aye.
Unanimous in favor, motion carries, thank you. Okay, move on to action item number five. This is Consideration of Ordinance 932, amending the zoning of property in the city's land use map to change the land use designation of land located at approximately 1450 West Riverdale Road from agricultural A1 zoning to regional commercial C3 zoning. This is being requested by Eric Anderson, Maverick Incorporated, and also the Gibby Family. Mr. Eggit.
Thank you, Mayor. Just as you noted, this is a reasoned request from A1 to regional commercial C3 to offer the possibility of a future commercial retail development opportunity or opportunities as it stands on this property, and you can look at the application documents for further understanding of what that might entail. The applicant group, as you noted, is Maverick Inc., represented by Eric Anderson and indirectly the Gibby Family as well. Their request is for approximately 4.58 acres of land on this property along Riverdale Road and Cozy Dell Drive. And in this case, the Gibby Family is asking for, that we consider a contingent reason for the application in order to protect the landowning interests of the Gibby Family's property in the event that Maverick project, for some reason, wouldn't get completed in the future. City staff interview with the city attorney is noted in the work session, has discussed an approach that would allow this goal to be accomplished in that reasoned request be considered for approval with the understanding that the reason would be put into legal effect on the zoning map and other city resources only after a future, or after a final site plan for the Maverick project has been approved by the city council in the future. All public hearing requirements have been met, accomplished, and you'll see that in your packet, and a public hearing was held on January 12th, 2021 with the Planning Commission. No comments were provided during that meeting or prior to, and at the conclusion of the meeting, the Planning Commission submitted a favorable recommendation for approval to the city council for the request reasoned with the condition that the zoning map and other resources not be changed until after a final site plan for the Maverick project has been approved by the city council in the future. All public hearing requirements have been met, accomplished, and you'll see that in your packet, and a public hearing was held on January 12th, 2021 with the Planning Commission. No comments were provided during that meeting or prior to, and at the conclusion of the meeting, the Planning Commission submitted a favorable recommendation for approval to the city council for the request reasoned with the condition that the zoning map and other resources not be changed until after a final site plan for the Maverick project has been approved by council. As far as the general plan, the general plan used for this area is currently set as planned commercial high. The proposed reasoned request and project concept requested use is in compliance with this land use designation and supported by the land use master plan element of the general plan. With that, you'll see, again, the legal documentation supporting a reasoned request change should it be approved this evening as Ordinance Number 932, and then the supporting documentation that has been prepared by city staff as well as the application from Mr. Anderson and the Maverick team on behalf of this request. And with that, I would defer back to the council mayor or, or any others who may have questions for me or for Mr. Anderson, or even the Gibby Family who are present with the, with our city recorder. Thank you.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Eggit or Maverick or Gibbys? Okay, do we have a motion on Ordinance 932?
I have a question for Steve. With this being contingent, it's, it's not publicized in the packet as contingent upon anything that I can see, and maybe I missed it, but I think, I, I don't see how we can do this on, if it's not notified in the, or packet. I mean, I don't have a problem with it if it's legal, but I think, you know, we're not, we didn't notify the public this was contingent upon the possibility of it working or not working.
Mr. Arnold?
Yeah.
I believe that's in the summary that Mr. Eggit wrote up that it's contingent upon a final site.
Right, but it's, it's not in the resolution.
Well, it's in the packet the public reads. Anything on that, Mike? Mr. Brooks?
Yeah. Alan, in Section 1 of that ordinance, right, I think it's about the second or third but the last line in Section 1, once the final site plan for the project, project has been approved by the city council, so the wording on that is designed for that reason, that's how I wrote that in there.
Okay, cool. So, I'll make the motion to approve Ordinance 932 as stated within the packet, contingent upon all the issues that are brought up today.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Sound like Mr. Hilton again.
Yes, sir.
Okay, motion, Counselor Arnold, Counselor Hilton, second. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. May, will you pull the council on Ordinance 932, please?
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Ellis?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Councilmember Arnold?
Aye.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous in favor, thank you. Can you move on to action item number six? Consideration of the date for the Old Glory Day celebration. Rich Taylor, Community Services Director.
Thank you, Mayor. We're seeking direction from the city council on the Observance of Old Glory Days. This year, July 4th falls on a Sunday. As some of you, or many of you know, we do multiple events through multiple days, but that, the, kind of the big celebration has always been on July 4th. The federal observance is July 5th. We're just looking for guidance from council. At this point, there's a lot up in the air of what we will be able to do, the celebration will look like, but having a date would help us vet some of those options out. So, we're just looking for a date for you guys. If you have any questions or comments, let me know.
I vote for the federal observance.
Yeah, I do too.
Okay, we got two votes.
As North Ogden, Leighton, Clearfield, who also have July 4th celebrations, have they indicated when they're going to do it?
Not that I'm aware of, Counselor Stevens. I've, I've talked to Clearfield staff, and they're kind of doing the same thing we're doing, is trying to fill out what we can do and what that celebration will look like, but I have not, that I'm aware of, they've not brought it to our council and firmed up a date yet.
Okay. I've got one comment, and I don't know how much it weighs, but I know in the past with the cleanup that comes after the fireworks and the celebrations, it's pretty extensive, and I know we've asked for volunteers, I think, the last year or two, and we've had people coming out, but if you did it, did it on a Saturday night, that'd be the other option. If you did it on Saturday, you'd have to do the cleanup either that night or Sunday morning, and I don't know how receptive that'd be to, to some of the people. That's just a thought to clean up, I don't know what the Sean thinks. Sean's thoughts are on that, I know he's involved in that a lot, Rich and you guys, but...
I know that we discussed it at the staff meeting this last week, and Sean was recommending July 5th as well. He felt like it would be better for his staff. I don't know if he's still on and could speak to that, but that's the comment he made at staff meeting last week.
Well, he'd have his full crew on Tuesday morning, and we'd have all the other employees which go and help quite often.
Mayor, I don't know if you heard, Councilman Ellis agree with me and Brayden.
Oh, did he? Well, that's good, we got three. Why don't you make a motion? This is consideration on this, it isn't a discussion item. Do we have a motion on that date for Old Glory Days?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we hold Old Glory Days compatible with the federal observance date of July 5th.
Second.
I have a motion, we have a second. Who was the second, was that you, Brent?
That was Brayden.
Brayden, okay. Counselor Mitchell, all right. Any discussion on that motion?
Can I, can I just ask something?
Sure.
Yeah, and, and I, and I get it, I, I'm somewhat indifferent on this, and, and I get that you have to plan and you need to firm up contracts and different things, which kind of, maybe this is off topic slightly, but are, are there clauses for, if we don't, if it turns out to be like last summer in some of these contracts? And I get it, you need it, you need to know, but I, I'm just, I, I get the feeling that we're not gonna be doing 4th of July, but I hope I'm wrong on that. If you would comment, please, Rich.
Yeah, we, we haven't signed any contracts as of yet. I've spoken with a couple of our vendors or, or people that have provided services in the past, and the contracts are gonna look a lot different than they did last year. Nobody foresaw a pandemic coming and did anything with, with that.
And, um, so it's definitely in our best interest and, and a lot of times is the service provider's best interest to, um, agree upon those things. So we haven't made any agreements with any service providers, but we'll definitely, uh, be careful and, and keep that in mind. Um, with these uncertain times, it, it, it poses a challenge, but we'll, we'll work through that.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or discussion? Uh, we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Looks like unanimous in favor. Okay, move on to action item seven. This is discussion of the celebration for the Easter egg hunt activities. Uh, Mr. Taylor again.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this discussion came up in our staff meeting last week, and we decided to, um, talk to you guys about it. I, I have a meeting with the U-City Council, uh, coming up, and, um, we need to make some decisions on the Easter egg, um, or the Easter celebration we typically do. Uh, last year, we canceled it due to concerns with COVID. Um, and that's definitely still on the table. We just kind of wanted to fill you guys out and see what you thought, um, about a celebration on Easter. There's definitely a lot of modifications that we could look at, and we're not necessarily looking for, uh, you guys to, to plan it or anything. Just wanted to kind of get your feeling on, pick your temperature where we're at.
Any thoughts on the Easter?
I don't, I don't think it's completely out of the question. I, I think, I appreciate you planning ahead. Um, it's, it's kind of too early for me to make a call. I don't think it's, it's, uh, to the point we're saying absolutely not, though. That's, that's my opinion.
Yep.
Part of the problem, if I, if I may, uh, just interject here a little bit, sorry, Alan. Um, it, I just, we've got, uh, scheduling things and, and in particular, supplies and candy and things like that that are perishable, that if we get it now, we could a lot better deal. If we wait too much longer, the, the, the better deal goes away if, if, and availability becomes a question. Um, and, uh, you know, scheduling things and, and, you know, it gets tough. So, uh, that's kind of why we're reaching out to you guys to, to give us, to help us with some direction on this. Um, should we schedule it tentatively so that we can get some of those things lined up? And, uh, in the event that there can be no event, that we, um, um, either postpone or I, I don't know what we'd do with, you know, several hundred dollars worth of candy and eggs at that point. But, uh, you know, this, this is, these are the concerns that we're having, and we kind of need to make these decisions now because, um, in the absence of guidance, uh, we don't really know how to do it, and then, uh, nothing happens well, so.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Mr.
I, I think it'd honestly be a good thing to turn it over to the youth, uh, with the U-City Council and let them make the decision. This is something that falls under their purview of what they put together. And so I think having them talk about it and figure out what they want to do to support this and, you know, I, I think, I mean, I, I would support their decision whether they need help or, or whatever, but I think, you know, it's, it's, you know, Rich, and obviously it's under your purview, but having the U-City Council say yes or no, and this is why, given the circumstances, rather than just filling eggs or anything like that. And I know Chief Shali, if, if we can't have the Easter egg hunt, they'll put the Easter bunny on the truck and rock and roll through the city, you know?
You can always use more candy.
Yeah, I agree. I hate to see this canceled if there's a way, if it's an outdoor activity and the youth can organize it safely, then we ought to support it.
Um, my con, my thoughts are, having participated recently with, with grandchildren is, I, I'd like to see it go forward, however, it, it's, it's really congested. I mean, it's over in thirty seconds. Um, but for some reason, I think maybe the, the playing field needs to be expanded. However you do that, but I, or maybe even lop off some of the older, the age group so you can spread out or something, but I, I would really like to see it happen. I think there is a, a, a sense of community there, and I, it's, it's very positive.
Okay, good comments. I like Counselor Arnold's idea with the youth council, let them talk about it, decide what they're going to do and make decisions. I think they're all good suggestions you've made. I, I think it'd be good to give them, like, uh, Alan said, let them have the responsibility, make them think, you know? Uh, and I know they, I know they do, and you're planning, Rich. They do a lot of, they do the planning and plan most of what goes on. But, uh, you know, I, I don't know. Any other thoughts on that? We won't vote on this. You get any help from that, Rich? Or do you have any other questions?
No, I, I, I think it's valuable to, to get some feedback from you guys and, and what I'm hearing, and, and I'll take it back to the U-City Council. And obviously, we, we want to be safe and we want to follow the health department guidelines. And, um, an event like this in the past, uh, definitely is not COVID-friendly. Uh, but I think that there's some adaptations and some things that, those kids are creative. Let's let them go to work. So that's what I'm hearing from you guys, and I appreciate the feedback.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, any other comments on the Easter egg hunt or the Easter's activity? Move on next to the discretionary items. Do you have any discretionary items for this evening? Okay, I just have one. I would, uh, I don't know, some of you are probably aware of this, but, uh, just about a week ago, uh, was it? I can't remember which day, Mike. Mike's father passed away about, was it J- January first?
It was, it was, uh, so last Sunday night, so it was January tenth. Yeah, January tenth.
January tenth, so it's just been, uh, just over a week ago. But, uh, want to extend our condolences to Mike. We talked about busy people, but he has been so busy with, uh, what you saw here tonight with all these projects and, uh, really jumping through the hoop. And at the same time, uh, he had to deal with this passing of his father. He was actually a, uh, victim of COVID, COVID nineteen. Uh, but, uh, no, Mike's done a great job, and, uh, I, uh, and I was gonna, last week, in fact, it was a week ago tonight, uh, the, uh, Maverick thing with Gibbys was on the agenda, and they worked that. And that was on a Tuesday night, and then he had the, I mean, the funeral and everything on Friday, and he's still got all this stuff, uh, on the Maverick that was passed, approved, recommended last Tuesday by the planning commission. Yeah, I was surprised. I wondered, I was hoping it'd be on there because that speed things up, but I thought that was really pretty special that I just, uh, I know Mike's situation, uh, is limited a little bit on support with his passing as far as people to help and things like that. So we extend our condolences to you, Mike, and we appreciate you. Thoughts and prayers are with you while you deal with this.
Thank you, Mayor. It's been challenging and tiring, but I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Uh, you're welcome. Do you have any other discretionary tonight? We have a motion to adjourn.
Don't move. Second.
Got a motion, we got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous, it's all in favor. Thank you very much for being here. Appreciate your time.